Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, Over the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Joy to the world, the Lord is come! Let earth receive her King! Every heart prepare and rue, And heaven and nature sing! And heaven and nature sing! And heaven and nature sing! Have a holly, jolly Christmas! It's the best time of the year! I don't know, but there'll be snow, But have a cup of cheer! Have a holly, jolly Christmas! And when you walk down the street, Say hello to friends you know, And everyone you meet. Oh, hold a mistletoe, Hung where you can see. Somebody waits for you, Kiss her once for me. Have a holly, jolly Christmas! In case you didn't hear, Oh my golly, have a holly, jolly Christmas this year! Oh, the weather outside is frightful, But the fire is so delightful. And since there's no place to go, Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow! When it doesn't show signs of stopping, And a rush from going for popping, The lights are turned way to jungle. Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow! When we finally kiss goodnight, Our ain't going out in the storm. But if you really hold me tight, All the way home I'll be warm. Our fire is slowly dying, And my dear, my still good body, But as long as you love me so, Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow! You know Dasher and Dancer and Prancer and Lixin, Comet and Cupid and Donner and Listen, But do you recall The most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, Had a very shiny nose. And if you ever saw it, You would even say it glows. All of the other reindeer Used to laugh and call him nice. They never let poor Rudolph Join in any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, Rudolph with your nose so bright, Won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeer loved him, Has a shout out with glee. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, You'll go darn if sorry!
I'd like to call to order The regular Board of Education meeting For December 21st, 2017, And our call for a roll call.
Chairman Queerfeld?
Here.
Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Here.
Secretary Sienna?
Here.
Gianna Bosamo?
Here.
Carolyn Candelora?
Here.
Marcy Anafrio?
Here.
Diane von Bech?
Here.
All right, if you'd join me in the salute to the flag. Fledgellations to the flag Of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, One nation, under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to welcome all of you To our board meeting And encourage you to come back In January and February When we get into our budget season Because it's always good To have parents and citizens involved. With that, I'd like to start With an opening statement. As you may be aware, Concerns have arisen About the past procedures Used by previous boards To extend and modify The superintendent's contract Without a full board vote. These concerns led the town council To call for an investigation On September 15th And to vote to send all pertinent information To the state's attorney's office Public Integrity Unit. On December 5th, 2017, The town council agreed To refrain from taking any action At this time In order to allow The newly constituted Board of Education An opportunity to look into these matters. The board appreciates the council Allowing the board to review And address these areas of concern And immediately began A review of procedures and practices. The board has found That the practice of making unilateral changes Without a board vote Spans at least a decade and a half And has occurred Under at least two superintendents. The board has taken steps To improve upon its policy and procedure By asking the board's lawyer To review bylaws P-9050, the chair, And P-9110, meaning conduct. The board's attorney suggested To ensure clarity That the board chair be authorized To act only when authorized By a specific board motion Or by the adoption of a bylaw Authorizing the board chair to act. In order to prevent The board chair from inadvertently Exceeding his or her authority. Additionally, the board With legal guidance from its attorney Will be reviewing Other policies and procedures In the upcoming months So that the public can be confident That a system of transparency With public discussion And full board votes Will be in place As this board moves forward. Now, we're going to move on To the superintendent's contract Discussion on possible action.
I'd like to make a motion To approve the contract Of Scott Shoemaker, Superintendent of Schools, With the revisions date Of December 21st, 2017, Effective January 1st, 2018, Through June 30th, 2020. And to grant the board chair And vice chair The authority to sign The revised agreements.
Is there a second? Marcy? Before we vote, I would just like to elaborate On the changes in the contract For purposes of transparency. There are three changes. The first is The food allowance has been removed. We have replaced it With the same dollar amount Being contributed towards TRB, Which is Teachers Retirement Bureau. The second change Is we have agreed With the superintendent To reduce the number Of accumulated vacation days From 75 to 50. And in return, we have agreed That he may be reimbursed For up to five vacation days per year. And finally, We have looked at The evaluation section of the contract And have revised it To reflect what we are doing And we have also formed a committee Consisting of Diane von Bech and Shawna To work with the superintendent To develop an evaluation plan With measurable goals And objectives And whatever else they come up with. So those are the changes That we'll be voting on In the contract. And the extension to June 30th, 2020. If there is no further discussion, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Chairman Queerfeld?
Yes.
Vice Chair Papa Holser?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Diane von Bech?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on To visitors' comments. I'd like to just remind-- All right, we were-- Thank you. We were moving on To visitors' comments, Limited to the agenda. And I'd like to remind people That there is a two-minute limit At this time Because we haven't voted On changing it to a three-minute limit yet. Please approach the microphone, State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lynn Reardon And I live at 33 Darrell Farm Road. And I have one thing I want to say. Merry Christmas to all And to all a good night. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any additional visitors' comments Pertaining to the agenda? All right, hearing none, We're going to move on To our student representatives.
The Connecticut State Police And the North Branford Police Department Provided a workshop For parents and students On November 30th Focusing upon internet safety And the positives and negatives Associated with social networking sites. Assistant Principal Greg Woods Collaborated with the agencies Planning this important event.
And on the arts front, The NBHS Winter Concert Was held on December 6th With selections performed By the concert band, Jazz Ensemble Chorus And Select Chorus. The vault groups also performed At the annual North Branford Tree Lighting Event On December 1st And performed for the Women's Club On Saturday, December 2nd. The North Branford High School Music Department Provided a preview concert To NBIS on December 21st And traveled to TBEES on December 18th.
The North Branford High School Drama Club Auditions For the spring production of Footloose Were held on December 7th and 8th. Set design and construction Has begun With approximately 16 weeks Until the performances.
Members of the North Branford High School Music Program And the National Honor Society Visited the North Branford Senior Center On December 15th For the annual holiday musical performance. Citizens were provided With a selection of seasonal songs Performed by the North Branford High School Chorus And Concert Choir.
The NBHS Homework Exploratory Committee Has administered a homework survey To all faculty. This committee and the NBHS leadership team Are currently reviewing The responses and feedback. Questions included Related to format, objectives, Frequency, and amount For all types of coursework. Future surveys will be provided To students and parents With final recommendations Drafted by both groups By the close of the school year.
Does that conclude?
That does conclude.
Thank you, guys.
Before you--
Merry Christmas.
We did mention The Spanish National Honor Society And both of our student reps Were members. And I want to thank Our two board members Mr. Springfield and Mrs. Kinnor That were here that day. And to echo and know How proudly we're And disciplined initiated At the high school. And it's certainly nice To have you too as members. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Merry Christmas. Merry safe to you.
Moving on to approval Of previous minutes, We'll take up The November 16th, 2017 Regular meeting, Exhibit A.
So moved.
Yep, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any changes?
They look good to me, Mary. You always do a good job.
I just-- I had one-- I just wanted to add a "but." I'm sorry, but-- Seeing-- On page 13 or 14, Third line down, Where it said, "Would she have seen herself But the board?" That's the only change. Any other changes? Okay. All in favor Of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay, then we'll move on To the November 28th, 2017 Special Meeting, Exhibit B. Is there a motion To approve the minutes Of the November 28th, 2017 Board of Education Special Meeting?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Shawna? Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. And we will move on To personnel. Don?
Well, there's two things That you haven't-- I have this. Plus, I passed The winter list Of high school And intermediate school coaches out, too, Who are underway In our winter seasons. The names are listed. I want to publicly thank our coaches.
You didn't pass them out. Or just-- I don't care. Just pass them around a little bit. Go make copies. Pass them around.
They are from the current winter season. Obviously, the high school Brought more activities And opportunities For indoor track, Boys and Girls Basketball, Ice Hockey, Boys and Girls Ice Hockey. Where at the middle school We have Boys and Girls Basketball And-- Boys and Girls Basketball. I think it was a-- Is that it?
That's it, yeah.
There are some familiar names That you'll see on here. Some members are teachers Who've been at the district Coaches that have been With us for a number of years.
Do you need a motion for that?
We need a motion. We're just waiting So everyone sees them Before we get the motion To approve. I probably should've Just read them all to everyone. All right. I'd like a motion To approve the list Of winter coaches As submitted by the administration.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstain.
Okay, so Marcy's abstaining.
I abstain because There's a relative on the list. My brother-in-law's The basketball coach At the middle school, so--
Thank you. All right, and then We also have a motion for a leave. Do you want to say anything first, Don?
No, this is what We discussed In executive session Last week, so--
Okay.
Motion to approve An unpaid leave For Christine Flanikin, A paraprofessional At Jerome Harrison School, For no longer than The remainder Of the 2017-2018 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Marcy seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Point of order. Do you want me to do roll calls For some of these That I think are--
You're doing fine.
Okay. Let me know if I'm not. Superintendent's report. Recognition.
This time, I would ask You to put this Call me to the faculty auditorium For a leader of honor Very special people Young ladies and coaching staff.
Firstly, Merry Christmas. It's wonderful. I'm in my ninth year here And I kid with the kids All the time About getting a banner. And with every time, It's kind of a running joke. And I truly understand What it takes to get a banner. I'm not going to bore you With my history as an athlete, As a high school varsity coach, Having played in college And played overseas. I understand. I truly understand What it takes To win a state championship. And it is an incredible task To undertake and to do. We've come close so many times. And there are certain things That go into it. You've got to have A little bit of luck. You've got to be injury-free. You have to have A great deal of talent, certainly. And you have to have A coaching staff That believes in you And that can get your players To play at another level. When all of those things Come together, And it's so hard To put all those pieces together, You form champions. And 50 years in the making, First undefeated season In our history of field hockey. A large round of applause. So we are going to-- Mr. Wadson is going to introduce. The girls are going to come forward. You have a very small token Of our appreciation. We have a flower for you And we'll call your coaches up. I'm going to ask that you stand In the front. You can come right across the front. We'll have your flower. And if you stand over here And tell me to introduce your coaches. Any photos, parents, Come forward for individual, team, Anything you'd like to do. This is informal. Okay? That being said, we're ready to go.
What, Seth?
Zalik Aldenzy.
Congratulations.
Emmy Norton. Sarah Cook.
Go Sarah! How are you? Good?
Is it not wrong? Adriana Perez.
No, we don't have enough to give it.
Angela Robinson. Angela, congratulations.
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 Thank you. Thank you.
Everybody, applause. Alyssa Gallegos. Emmy Tilman. Sofia Nastasio. Carrie.
Congratulations. Congratulations. By your graduation.
Zoe Hughes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Kelly Daniels.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Alyssa Tyler. Alyssa DeRosa. Alyssa Terrence.
Congratulations.
So, you're-- Well, we're going to do that Before we do. So seniors-- We had the seniors Come out in front. Step out in front. Obviously, underclassmen, You've had amazing leadership With your seniors And your captains And your leaders on the field. So take those lessons And carry them on With everything you do. We wish you nothing but the best. We're involved with other sports And I know how busy we are. But this will be a memory Engrained for life. And it's not going to be The score of the game. It's going to be the friendships, The relationships That you form over these years And these bonds Will continue on forever. And I know that Because I'm going to call Your coaches up now. And you're going to see Some of the names That have been here That have stood here before As state champions. So that being said, Kathy Galdenzy. Kathy Stewart. Lori Conley. Avon Boltman. Yvonne, obviously is not here This evening And played on that 81--
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. Eighty-one, back-to-back. And I was fortunate enough To get photographs Of three different generations Of players From three different times. And I promise I'll get Those pictures, too. But no one was more proud Than Coach Boltman. So she's not here But she's here in spirit And we thank her. And the time and energy That goes into coaching Is one thing. The time and energy That goes into doing it The right way. And it's not just during the season. It's year-round. It's camps, it's clinics, It's conditioning, it's training. It's keeping up on their grades. They know-- These athletes know That it's books first. Well, wait a minute. books first. Well, wait a minute. It's family first. It's family first with Coach Doon. You know that. The academic piece is close. The sport itself is third. And it's ingrained and instilled in them. And I know the alumni that have played for Coach would echo those sentiments. And I know she does not like to be talked about. Obviously, it's not for her. I haven't been doing this long, 25 years, and worked with a number of coaches. I've never met an individual, let alone a coach, like that. They broke the mold, and I've been in different districts.
She's not going to let me go on.
So we're going to...
Is this the best team in the whole wide world?
Coach, take it away.
And to the board and the town, honest to goodness, it's a whole community that is raising these fine young ladies and the coaches staff, everyone. From the bottom of my heart, thank you very much for this recognition. But day in and day out, you were the ones who support us on and off the field, and the music and the theater arts and sports and everything. And that's what this town is all about. So to each and everyone here, I do thank you. And have a wonderful, healthy, happy holiday. Family is everything. Take time to say I love you to each one of your family members. And give these girls an extra hug.
Look, you don't miss me.
My hands not down.
My favorite was when you were on stage.
You just wanted to point out your progress.
The chocolate are going to be free if anybody eats. Of course, we have three cookies.
We're going to call to order the board of that meeting. That was a wonderful recognition to the field hockey team.
Truly a pleasure. And your support.
That was great. Oh, they deserve it, and the coaches deserve it.
We're under superintendent's report, moving down to communications.
Okay, thank you. Once again, congratulations to our girls' class of champions once again. The board briefs are contained in the board packet. There's a number of things that have been going on, and I can obviously read them to you. But again, I'd like to recognize each and every school for their efforts. If you have the ability to get out and catch a game, or a concert, or a performance, or to see the induction into the Spanish Honor Society, there's just wonderful opportunities for our students. And I thank the board for their support and their liking of those opportunities. If there's any questions. If not, there are no field trips on the agenda. We have a spotlight presentation this evening. Actually, before I do that, I have a letter from the executive director of CAS, the Association of Schools, to Mr. Stepper, the principal of the high school, thanking him for the hurricane relief, heroes relief fund, the monies, and items that were shipped down to Texas, Florida, St. Croix, Virgin Islands. So I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Stepper and the high school, their efforts, that they continue to help those in... That being said, the spotlight this evening is a program that has been started for our new teachers in the district. It's obviously called the New Teacher Academy. Mr. Guadz and Meg Lee are here to present and answer questions, talk about the protocols, the program. I believe they have...
You guys have one here?
We do.
Everyone has to... Okay.
As I get a little bit... So last year, the high school got seven new teachers. Some were veteran teachers from other districts, some were just brand into profession. And I think they had introduction to North Bradford High School, but then they got right into the classes and the curriculum and their lesson planning, and the year just took off. And as you can imagine, as a new teacher or new into a building, there's a lot going on. Simultaneously, Megan and I, who's the new students, and last year was her first year in that role, attended at CAS, the new leaders workshops. And that was just a nice, like, I think it was five or six workshops throughout the year, different topics, new leaders, and all the schools could go ask questions and do presentations. And that became really the genesis of what started for us at the high school with having seven new teachers and having a lot of them become frustrated at different parts of the year. And frankly, having some of us become frustrated because, you know, field trip protocol and what to write on a pink slip, when do you write a discipline referral? What should an email response look like? So a guidance asks for an update on a student. What are some things that you should put in there? What are some things that you should stay informed of putting in there? And then, you know, everything else, all things North Bradford. So Megan and I, who are very close, we have the office together, decided to come up with, you know, our version of the new leaders workshop, and it's at the high school with the new leaders and categories.
So Greg kind of alluded to this, but what we're doing is we have four seminars, and they meet throughout the school year. We try to do two in the fall and then two in the spring. And this year, we've incorporated this in our second, well, really second full year, and we're incorporating first and second year teachers. So we were able to kind of, you know, go over things that they may have already experienced before too as a refresher. And that's a lovely picture from our most recent seminar. They look very confused in that photo, as you can see. But something else that's really wonderful about it is that, if you're familiar with the staff of the high school, we actually have some veteran teachers that choose to attend some of our sessions just as a refresher. Which is really great. And it creates a really nice dialogue between everyone, asking questions. And I add something to it. It helps the new teachers to feel like they don't need to know everything right away. There are going to be questions that are always going to come up, so.
The gentleman at the far right looks like a seasoned veteran of 20 years that I...
He is, sir, yes.
So on the 13th, we'll go over the agenda for the year. This is on the 13th. What we did was we invited all support staff. This is support staff, guidance, mental health, student assistant counselors. They all came in, they talked about what they do, and when to reach out to them, what to, you know, utilize them for. And then, some teachers didn't even know, you know, really what some of them did. So it was really a great opportunity. And a lot of veteran teachers, they get a refresher on that, so they can, you know, help lead our students to get some help. These are some of our program goals that we came up with, which is obviously to acclimate the new teachers to the high school, all things high school, policies, protocols, really provide a support system, and just have a kind of a forum for them to get together together, kind of speak about what's going on in their classrooms, what they're seeing, vent a little bit, ask us questions, and really have this bridge between the administration and them, and make them feel really comfortable to, you know, bring anything up to us at any point. The department leaders, there's a lot of department leaders. So this is another opportunity to kind of take some of that, put them in a forum, ask a lot of questions. I mean, really just give some of a refresher for some veteran teachers, as Megan said, too. We've done two this year. We did one last spring. Both this year, both of we had like an average of five veteran teachers that came in to go work with some of the ladies that they just wanted to review. So it's been really great.
We spent a lot of time focusing on culture amongst our students, but, you know, it's very important to focus on culture among the teachers. And this is a great way to kind of continue and still that positive, you know, nature between everyone. So our first one that we had in September, we really just was going over DVE, grading, you know, basic things that any new teacher would need to know. Of course, all of that information is in this very thick handbook that they receive at the beginning, but, you know, we really kind of focused in on those most important things. We also over all the technology resources as well. There were a lot of them, and, you know, different logins and how do you access that. And as Greg mentioned, how do you write a pink slip appropriately, what type of information? You know, sometimes that can get new teachers into difficult situations. So we want to try to avoid that. We also kind of clarify the purpose of the special education, the function of the resource room. That's always something that I think initially, you know, teachers understand the curriculum, but when they're combated with modifications and making sure they're following the IEPs, it's a really good refresher to have for them. And we always end all of our sessions with a Q and A to provide us a great sense of time to vent, but also some kind of asking questions that might not be on the agenda for them.
So this is our agenda for the first one in September. You can see we went over a lot. We spent a lot of time with the referrals. A lot of new teachers especially are very... They don't want to write a pink slip. You know, they're not sure that they're, you know, it doesn't look good for them to write a discipline referral. So, you know, we're the ones that receive those, and we assure them it's okay to write these. This is what you should put on them. Here are some strategies within the classroom to, you know, get students' behavior back on track. Here's some, you know, lesson plan for block scheduling. So all these things that we're able to talk about this board, we make them feel very comfortable and at ease with it. And we spent a lot of time with emails, with guidance reaching out to teachers too, to get updates on what to put on there.
And that was actually something that had come up in session two as well, what to put in an email. And that was really helpful because we had the support staff there to answer those questions. Because they're the ones often receiving those emails. And believe it or not, there were a lot of staff, some who had been in the building for over a year, so weren't really sure, you know, who's the school psychologist, who's the social worker, what's the difference between those roles, what is the function of our student assistance counselor. So we were able to clarify all of that for them.
If you look just here, we have so much support at the high school. I've said it since I came here. Our guidance does so much more than it typically, you know, scheduling the classes. They do so much with students, the council students. Students will come to them with, you know, maybe an issue that they're having with another student, social media things, stressors from home. And our guidance staff spends so much time talking with them, and being really a liaison between men, their teachers, their parents, us. So, you know, we introduce them to the new teachers, hope the new teachers understand, utilize them, go to them, and then we can really help our students in so many different ways. The next couple of topics, you can see we did March and then Meg. The one in March is going to be all Meg because it's going to be a mindfulness stress management. If she wants to bring some yoga into it, so I want her to take a step back. But mindfulness for teachers, because this is, I mean, right now is that kind of time of year. We're all very excited. But, you know, leading up to this week has been stressful for some students. This time of year can be stressful for students for a lot of different reasons and for staff. But coming, you know, in March and now, you know, we don't have really a lot of vacation time there, and it's been a lot. So it's very stressful that time of year as well. So we're going to talk about mindfulness for teachers, but mindfulness activities in the classroom for students to kind of take five minutes to, you know, kind of refocus and take a step back. And you'd be amazed at how much students appreciate that perspective sometimes, just taking a step back and reflecting. And it's okay to fail, and it's okay to miss an assignment, it's okay, you know, to not be perfect. And we'll be talking a lot about that.
Before we kick off the section, and just leading into, with Ms. Lee running that session in March, she's a full-time teacher. I know she was introduced as a student of students, but she is a full caseload and teaches a full load at the high school in the English department. She was a special ed teacher prior to, and then transferred over to the English department. So having someone that's, and I'm not saying this to my administration, that is in the trenches each and every day, that has a number of years, certainly makes that connection with presenting with her fellow teachers.
And what's been great with them is that she teaches EAP, Language and Com. She also teaches bridges, and she does later C WAP teacher. So she sees the full gam. It's pretty impressive. And then the last, the last building on our experience is really reflecting on the year. What was most positive? We're going to have staff kind of share what really worked for them, and then share what are their challenges, and then what would you do differently going into next year? Let's plan for next year. And if we have new staff, we're going to start this cycle again. But this would complete the two-year cycle for the new staff that we just had. All sets have been back, so that's a good thing. But I do thank the staff. They really appreciate just, you know, being noticed and getting together. They had veteran teachers come in there, they realized, I'm not by myself, I'm not alone in this. And it's been a really nice, nice way to kind of build that culture.
Sounds like a fantastic program.
Yeah, thanks. You guys have any questions?
No, but I just want to make the comment that it must be very helpful for the new teachers to have someone who is teaching in the content areas and has the bridges and the special ed training to help them, because it is so overwhelming with all of the different, you know, IEPs and modifications and things that have to, have to occur at the same time you're just mastering teaching your content. So I would think you would be a wonderful asset for our teachers.
Thanks, I hope so. And I think, you know, that's what Greg and I work for, is to be as approachable as we can and allow them to come and see us. And I think this really lines itself too, that it starts that conversation, which is important.
I had the opportunity to go to on the 20th, but I have to say that they both did a wonderful job. And that the teachers clearly appreciated it during their Q and A. Not only did some of the new teachers ask questions, but some of the veteran teachers did as well. And they were very appreciative for the time.
Now, this is in support of when they're hired new to the district. We have either a full or a two-day program where Don and Tracy, Suzanne, and Bruce all work with for the nuts and bolts of getting into their classrooms. But they're so overwhelmed with, you know, insurance policies and where's the rest of everything that, you know, a new teacher was faced with in a new building and a classroom setup. It's a lot to absorb. So this gives them a more timely way to, you know, build upon what those first two days started, and then work throughout the year and reflect at the end of the year for the fall of the year. So it's been a great program. Do I foresee other buildings getting involved in shadowing that? Yes. I know there's been conversations about it. So it's something that would be very successful district-wide.
And this is in addition to our teen program. One of the reasons that Greg initially spoke about this today was that only two of the new teachers were in teens because there were so many teachers that had already completed it in different districts and came to us. So they really, while we support those new teachers that are new to the profession, some of the other teachers weren't getting that support. So Megan and Greg really provide that service to them. And they wore the building with all of the new teachers. There was only one new teacher not in the high school, so.
That's a great point, because the seven were replacements with retirements and some of our folks leaving for other places. So seven for us is a large, large number in one year. Generally, it's one or two maybe. So when they came to us and suggested this, I, you know, they supported it. And I think it's very telling, as Mrs. King said, that we now have department chairs encouraging maybe some of their members to attend, and faculty members going on their own accord as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. We have a request from the high school. I'm not going to read the entire request, though. Just summarize it. Our health class for the second semester, we have signed five sections, one with 29 to 5 students. Content for the health curriculum is one that, the smaller the class size, the more optimal for addressing some of the teen issues that they discuss for both the male and female participants in the class. This is not an occasion. We're requesting and asking for one additional section, so that those numbers can decrease by four or five students per class to get to about 24 per class. We have certified members, and we would put that out to them, and then they respond if they are interested in picking a section. And then the building principal will make a recommendation to my office for a person if you do approve it. We have cost factored it, and it's not an expensive piece. It's a half-year course, paid at the overload rate, but will be cut in half. So it is under $4,000 total to run.
Have you offered online to these kids? Because I think my son took an online health course.
We generally offer online courses when there's been conflicts with schedules. In this case, these kids do have, you can take the course in-house, if you will, within their schedule. And while the online course, I think, is a great opportunity for kids, I think the type of content that a high school health class includes with the significant issues that teens face today, having that live individual in front of that person, and sometimes referrals come out of that, guest speakers, is a pretty rich experience. So it's not something that we can't explore. Our first option, we'll see if these kids can have a live experience like their classmates.
Would the online course be cheaper than doing a whole new class?
We do have the seats that we pay for on an annual basis. So there would be seats there that are already paid for.
We have not matched the curriculum though as of right now, because the state has changed requirements in health classes. So we would have to investigate all of that before we just really move forward about to make sure that it's matched.
I want to just echo the, our ability to use online is when we have potentially a low incident course, a scheduling conflict, a student who is out for medical reasons or potentially for disciplinary reasons. So we try to cost factor out what feel that the advantages of having a teacher in So we try to cost factor out what feel that the advantages of having a teacher in front of the class and the rich discussion with the health, which is a requirement in the state of Connecticut. We feel that that is something that we want to hold firm with.
I have a question. Is this an area where we've eliminated physicians in the past year or so?
Yes, yes.
And that's why we're, we're short a section?
We currently have three certified health teachers on the staff.
Yeah, PE folks who have health as well. And we have a health certified.
So they're teaching both the health and the...
We have one, one teacher teaching all of the health, the majority of the health. And with our PE numbers, you recall, we moved the phys ed teacher down, dominated or dominoed into all the way down to Jerome when we moved the person, so.
I, I think with, with everyone going on in the world with, you know, I don't want to mention all the people, but I already did. So, I mean, there's so much going on, so many issues. I would support the additional section so that you would have a smaller number of students for the types of discussions. Because I don't think you're going to have that much smaller of a class by adding one section either. Maybe bringing it down to about, what, twenty-two, twenty-four?
When we did it in ten of sections, the range would be from eighteen to twenty-five at most in the mid twenties. So it went dramatically reducing, but we're making much difference in having there.
More manageable.
And it's sort of a, you know, I appreciate Scott bringing this to us for a vote. It's, it's a sort of standard type of solution in high schools when you have big sections to offer a teacher extra compensation to teach one class. And I appreciate the board having the opportunity to be made aware of it and to vote on it. And I, I would support it. I, I think we'll move to a motion and then...
Then I'll make, then I'll make a motion to add one additional section of health at North Bramford High School for the second semester of the 2017-2018 school year.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing not, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Chairman Quirfell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Diane Bunbed?
Yes.
Thank you, on behalf of the high school, to the students of the class.
You're welcome.
Then we will move on to committee reports, under negotiations.
Well, I really, we, we reviewed the couple things in executive session and I have not met with the group, some meeting with them January third.
All right, and Marcy, did you have anything else to add under negotiations?
No. Thank you though.
You're welcome. Budget and operations?
Do you want to do it, Donna, or you want me to?
You can.
So our budget for this year, it's nicely intact at this point. You added the new column with the percentage committed, which was very helpful. Thank you for doing that. And apparently, Don and Anthony on the town side met with ACES about the collaborative insurance. And they're discussing it, the rates, they haven't made the rates available yet. So we're not going to discuss it to any great length without having the rates available. And I'll get my agenda here. We had a tentative talk about the school calendar. So Carolyn is on the committee for that. So hopefully in January, you guys will meet. And maybe January or February meeting will have a calendar to approve. And we discussed FMLA, possible leaves for employees in general that might not have enough sick time to cover their, their leave. And that was about it.
Well, there, there was one other thing that I was going to bring up, but we sort of ran out of time because of the concert. I, I received from a parent, and I shared it with the board yesterday, a letter that superintendent in another town sent out concerning budget, workshops and all. And I wondered if that wasn't something we would want to, to share with our parents.
We put the dates out on a calendar and we can easily do a mailer out to solicit.
Yeah, an email or something, just explaining.
Solicit the dates and then we have our workshops and that's something we can do.
Yeah, because it promises to be a very difficult budget year.
Well, we can use school messenger for that also. That's, it's only if it's a referendum that you're...
But it was, it was a nice, you know, a nice way to let parents know what's going on with the budget and all. Because often they don't understand what's going on until it's...
Too late.
It's too late. So I, I thought I'd mention that. And that was it for me for budget. Okay, moving on to curriculum, instruction and strategic planning.
Yeah, I'm going to try and get through it.
We're going to try.
We met today and we met with our instructional coaches, Ms. Peterson and Ms. Levine. They did an outstanding job discussing the coaching model that is currently in existence and one in which they received extensive professional development, development on, that they would like to bring in called cognitive coaching. And they talked about the effectiveness of the program. And what was enlightening to me, every time I hear something like that, is the connection back to student improvement and student achievement, which they were able to do. And basically, in their role as coach right now, they're supporting teachers with how to best instruct students with the 21st century type of learning that is required to be successful. So they did a great job. I think the district's pretty lucky to have these two people. They were very, very knowledgeable and supportive. And that was pretty much our meeting.
Thank you. It was a wonderful presentation. Okay, moving on to pension. We had a special meeting called by Anthony Esposito to meet with the fellow that runs the pension fund for North Bramford. And the discussion was around our poor investment. Earnings, I guess you'll say?
Returns.
Yeah. There were, there were concerns expressed because many, many different funds are making eleven percent or so in a traditional format. And ours has been relatively flat. So I think there are going to be some follow-up meetings. But that's, that was about it for pension. And then policy, Beth?
Okay. Yes, we have two policies for second read and approval. You were given the, the sheet of what was taken out, what was put in. We had a discussion last meeting. So I'd like to present policy P-9050 for approval.
And let's see, we'll make a motion and then discuss. So you have a, was that a motion, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay. So Beth made a motion to approve policy P-9050. Chair is submitted. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? I have, I have some discussion because I think it's very important that we pass that it's, it was the work of Ann Littlefield and Scott Schoonmaker in looking at the role of the chair, making certain that the chair has no, I want to say superpowers, but that's not really it. It's, it's just reigning in the chair so that going forward, there are votes on, on everything that the chair is going to act on in keeping with our focus on transparency and making certain that the public is informed, that we are having public discussions and all. And the original, the, the red line that you have is the origin, is the second thing because originally, policy had back in September after the August curve fluffle about vacation pay. Policy had gone to redo the policy. And at that time, the policy committee sought to remove the will of the board. So originally, it said, sign the instruments, acts and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the board. Because the will of the board was where we were getting into trouble. So policy thought we would simply remove it and do away with the problem. And then Scott sent it to our attorney, who reworked it as it is appearing this evening. And I brought her original letter. And she, she said that she wanted to have us remove that line. She says, we then propose deletion of this policy, this following paragraph. The sign the instruments, acts and orders necessary to carry out state requirements, the town charter and the action of the board, which was from what we had put in. So I just, I don't know if that's confusing, but for full disclosure, originally it said the will of the board. We substituted actions of the board. And Ann Littlefield basically said, take it out and go with what she gave us. So that's what I would recommend that we do. And I don't know if there's other discussion? I just feel it will close a long, decades-long chapter and help us move forward.
And if I could just echo with Ann Littlefield, who originally has been working with us in the district and we rely on her heavily for her legal advice, that I would strongly recommend following her advice on that strike and that change.
All right, thank you. So then I'll call for a roll call vote. We had a second, didn't we?
Yeah. Chairman Quirfell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Diane Bunbed?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then Beth will move on to the next of your policies.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P-9110. Meeting conduct as submitted.
Okay, and is there a second?
A second?
All right, and the big change there really is adding Robert's Rules as a resource for us to rely on until such, such time. We have not adopted Robert's Rules. So many times you get into a situation where there's something procedural that needs to be determined. And again, Ann Littlefield, our policy attorney, has strongly recommended that we, we have that in place so that when we have a gray area and we don't know where to go, we now have somewhere to go.
Do we need training on that though?
Oh, I think we probably will need. I've got the book already.
The book is pretty big, so I mean, I'm just a little hesitant to put it in place if we haven't been trained on it yet.
Well, I think, I think we can put it in place because our bylaws take first, in other words, our bylaws are still in place. That's only if there's some gray area where you could rely on it. But I do think that first, I mean, right now, I'm looking to have CADE come in in probably the end of January to do training on functioning as a board and roles and responsibilities of boards, board members. And I'm a little hesitant to, to have Robert's Rules training in, in January too when we're getting into the budget season. But we certainly could look to February or March. And I think we'll be okay. We've been, we've been going without it for now. And as long as our, our bylaws take precedent and it's only if there's not something in the bylaws, I think we'll be okay. Plus, I, I do have my book and I will bring it from now on. So we can always take a little break, a little things up. But yeah, I do think we...
So is that worded D, I'm just curious, by Ann Littlefield herself? Or did we tweak it?
Well, she, the only thing we tweaked was we took out the telephone. But Ann, Ann wrote all of this and I have that original also. If you would like to see it.
If the board do not want to participate in telephone line.
Right.
No, 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 I know. I'm wondering about D itself. Because it sounds like Robert's Rules of Order is the way it's going to go unless the bylaws say otherwise. Where I think it should say, we'll follow the bylaws unless...
Right, let me find.
Do you see what I'm saying? I feel like Robert's Rules is the governing piece. And you're, and hearing you, it sounds like it's our bylaws and we only refer.
Well, our bylaws, I think...
It's right here, Sarah. That's a red sheet.
Yeah, but I'm looking for the original. Sorry about this. I, we've got this, but then we want the original thing that Scott gave us, which I had a minute ago.
Yeah, I agree with you. So if that's the case, we should have training before our very next meeting because what it's saying is... It's saying Robert's Rules is first and ours is a secondary.
All right, hold on a second because I did find it. I'm just, okay. And the other, the other big thing there is the two-minute thing. She wanted us to put, Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the proceedings of the board, except as otherwise provided by these bylaws. So if it's except as otherwise provided by the bylaws, the bylaws would cover everything it has. And then because her rationale...
To need to know everything that's... When would one oversee the other? I don't know that off the top of my head. Do we all confidently know when?
Well, I think we go with our bylaws. And then if there's something, because what she says is, we recommend the board maintain a reference to Robert's Rules of Order in its policy regarding meeting conduct. Robert's Rules fill in any gaps in the board's bylaws as to meeting procedure. For example, Robert's Rules provides structure for handling issues such as tabling matters, addressing amendments to motions and rescinding, reconsidering motions, which topics are not addressed elsewhere in the board's bylaws. So I'm reading it that our bylaws are first and foremost, but when we get into a gray area...
You're the English teacher with the prepositional phrases. To me, it reads differently, but if you agree, I mean...
Yeah, and, and that's what she's really saying. It's, it's to fill in any gaps left by the board's bylaws. So the bylaws would be first and foremost. And then if we got, you know, there was a lot of discussion about rescinding motions in, out in the, the news and saying, well, we could use Robert's Rules to do, to do this. But we really couldn't because we didn't have Robert's Rules yet. But in that case, you...
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to, so basically, the governing is going to be the bylaws, except where it's not clear, it will be law.
Right, right. So that's, that's where we are.
So I would change that to the...
But... Okay, and then the, changing the public comment from two minutes to three minutes? Was there anything else major there, Beth, that I missed? Okay, any further discussion? And we'll do a roll call on this too.
Chairman Quirfell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Diane Bunbed?
Yes.
Thank you. And ACES. I was unable to go to the ACES meeting this week, but they did break ground for the leader health project. And they also gave a tour to board members to go around and visit the ACES schools. Building committee? No, no building committee. Communication, we had two emails to our communications link. One was basically encouraging us to continue being transparent. And the other was from someone who was in this meeting room and was uncomfortable because it was too hot and wanted to bring it to our attention. So that one was directed, you know, to...
I felt the heat.
Yeah.
We're working with parking wreck in, in the town line. But obviously, this building was retrofitted and renovated. We really haven't done anything with the heat in this part. We put some valves and Don can better explain it. But this room does get warm. We've been in here, unless we put the air conditioner on, it'll, it'll pump heat through as part of the loop. And it's, it's not ideal. It's an old outdated heating source. And until we make some significant upgrades to it, it's really no different than the high school. I think this is just...
That says it all. Yeah, just warm and safe.
All right, so that, that was it for communication. Under new business, I'm not certain if this is where this belongs. It could also go under good of the board. But Mayor Duty contacted me and explained that the new town attorney works for both the Board of Education and the town in Orange. He quoted, the new attorney is costing fifteen hundred per month. Wanted us to, to consider it. I don't even know if he would say... I don't even know if you would save money going that way or not.
I did speak with Anthony Esposito, and the way that his hourly rate versus his retainer rate, you just have to watch how that plays out with what the actual cost is going to be. And I would just be cautious until we see, over a year's time, lower retainer or higher retainer, lower hourly rate, and how that...
Well, I would like Don to look at legal fees and costs and speak to us about it. And I also think if we're going to talk to attorneys, we'd also talk to Ann Littlefield or...
Well, I mean, is it a conflict of interest?
I don't see how it's not a conflict of interest.
Because, I mean, I'm just saying, I would...
I don't know how that's not a conflict of interest.
I don't know why we would do that unless it's a...
Yeah, I'm just reporting that the mayor called me and said, and I guess Orange. Now, Guy Stella has retired. He was in Orange, we could have asked him how that worked. The attorney does both Orange and...
It works, and it's a sweet deal for the new guy. But overall, I think we have important business that clearly we've dealt with conflicts. And I feel like the Board of Ed took a brunt of a lot of stuff, and we took it, and we're moving forward, so I hear. But to share an attorney based in the climate, I don't think right now is... I don't think it's...
Right, and I'm not advocating one way or another. I'm simply reporting information that came to me. And I do think we should put the day-to-day attorney on the agenda and decide if we want to go with Ann Littlefield, if we... What we would like to do, because I think that...
I had provided the hourly rates to you some time back. So you had the three different firms that we work with. One for special education, which was the lowest. Our middle policy, or excuse me, the highest was our policy significantly higher. And then our daily operation one was about a hundred dollars less per hour. So I can dig down and show you the three, the amount that we used then over a year's time, so you have a real clear picture of what we're paying.
Yeah, I know.
I know the town budgeted almost a hundred and seven thousand dollars is what they're paying their attorney for his part-time gig. A hundred and six thousand seven hundred dollars, I believe I checked the town budget.
I'm just wanting to make certain that we have a board attorney that we feel comfortable going to. And I feel that, you know, Bill Condon has a long history doing the contract negotiations, and that is fine, he's very good at contract negotiations. It seems like Ann Littlefield's doing more of policy and what we need, and that may be something we want to look at.
I mean, I think, I agree personally, and I know it's a team decision, but there are a lot of attorneys in the state of Connecticut.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So just to go with somebody just given...
So should we put it on the agenda for next month?
If it's critical and...
Talk about it?
If it's critical right now in the midst of budget, I don't know, but...
Yeah, I think, you know, being able to plan, and Don can give us some more information on costs of the... Because...
I'll reset email I sent two months ago, what their hourly rate. And then I'll even, I can...
Yeah, we have it from the hearing officer stuff, but yeah. So we could just...
I mean, I wouldn't know what a good hourly rate is, but I'm pretty sure that we can get competitive pricing if that's...
They can vary by a hundred to a hundred fifty per hour difference, per hour.
Well, let's hope we have some months where we don't need an attorney at all.
Do you know, I want to put you on the spot. Do you know on the average what we spend a year on legal fees?
I don't want to guess. Because, you know, it varies a great deal. We spent recently, or this year...
Yeah, higher than normal.
That was last year. Because of the arbitration, the teachers' negotiations arbitration. But that's, I break that out separately, so I mean, we can...
Okay.
You can sort of ignore that piece of it and look at the rest. We also break out special ed separately, so you know, that's all documented.
Okay, because I didn't even know fifteen hundred was a lot, or not a lot, or, you know...
You have to be careful with the retainer versus the hourly rate and how that plays out in the long run.
I just see a huge conflict. Forget the retainer and the hourly rate. I mean, that is a huge conflict. I don't know how he could have the interest of the town and the interest of the board, especially if we are disagreeing on something and he needs to make a determination.
And you said that is done in another...
He, that's why Mike Duty called me about it, because our new town attorney represents the Orange Board of Ed and the Orange Town. And I believe he also is just taking that on in Derby. But I'm not certain if it's both Board of Ed and Town in Derby. I mean, and I wanted to pass that information on to you.
I think maybe moving down the road, it could be something to be considered. But right now, with the current climate, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that at all.
That's what I said. So, but I agree. Definitely.
Or we can still talk about the day-to-day lawyer.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
On the agenda. All right, thank you. And then, under good of the board, I just want to say the Spanish Honor Society was wonderful, the induction. It doesn't matter where they do the ceremony, you know, a big high school. Ours was our very first time doing it, and they, it was just perfect. You know, the candles, the kids lighting, it was just very well done. And I was also very impressed that we had twenty-nine students there being inducted in a high school of our size. Actually, there was a thirtieth student, I believe, that was at ECA. So I thought the numbers really were phenomenal and impressive. And Carolyn was there, because her son was inducted. It was just very nice.
Went to the concert, one of the concerts at the intermediate school, and that was very nice. Such talented students, the band and the chorus for the Christmas concert was really nice. And tonight I'm hoping to get to a basketball game, we'll see.
Anything additional for good of the board? Visitors and press?
Hi, Brady Little, Old Turnpike Road. I just want to touch on a few things you said tonight, the attorney. I do not think it's wise to combine the town with a BOE. I don't know when the climate between the town and BOE has been cohesive. And I just think the Board of Ed is just setting themselves up for some problems. Secondly, I'm glad that you did approve about the health teacher, because I personally feel that online is totally not the way to go. You need, you know, these kids need contact with the teacher. And, you know, my kids, they do their work, they're good kids. But if you told them to sit at a computer and watch, because they're going to learn about health, they're going to look at me and say, "No, that's not going to happen." So I just want to say, thank you for approving that.
Any other visitors or press?
Hi, my name is Ashlyn, and I'm from TVES Latucket Valley Elementary School in fourth grade. My teacher is Ms. Thompson. In my class, we are learning about immigration. This week, we walked to the senior center to ask people questions about their life. I was partnered with Patty, who was born in nineteen thirty-six, immigrated from Italy to USA, and already got her green card. Then we did crafts, sing songs, and had lunch. Their lunch is awesome. And because we have a single day.
They don't have to do the healthy certification.
No, the thing is, do I have to pay three dollars for lunch? I'm here to thank you for letting us have these opportunities to let us meet these seniors. Thank you, and good night.
Any additional visitors or press? Seeing none. Mentioned that the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sold. Second.
Second was Janne, right?
Oh, did we formally adjourn?
Or was it...
Should we formally adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we want to introduce Janne Bosomo, our brand-new Board of Ed member, and welcome her.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Yeah, we're grateful. All right, now we'll vote to adjourn.
All in favor?
I oppose.
How is your...
He is, but he's been very good. I will say he's been much better.